I'd like to read to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. We've got a few end-of-year things to do today. Nick will not be here today. So if we have attorney question, we'll have to wait. All right, we have minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the November 18 meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have payroll. Three of this done. Is that right? No, it's counted payroll down there. Okay. So we have two payrolls as normal, one for the county and one for the Union Hospital Security. One amount of $249,721.45, and then Union Hospital Security of $2,441.70.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll as presented.
Second?
All in favor say aye. All right, then we need to acknowledge receipt of the payroll claims accounts payable report, and that's amount of $216,663.98.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, I'm sorry. Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is the fourth today?
Second.
Second.
All right, then we have the accounts payable to claims to approve. The amount of, it's a lot of end-of-year stuff, so why, it's high. $502,413.3.
And I'll make a motion to approve claims as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Susan to the lady from work one to get with Hugh about how to do the billing for the CDL training at the Highway Department.
She didn't really go into, but I will come, reach out to her and get that worked out.
Okay, I talked to the council on that. We'll just take it out of the Highway Department sometime. We'll move it around, and then when they reimburse us in six months, we'll put it right back working out. Had seven go today to get introduced to the training, so we're underway really well. All right, then I guess if that's all that housekeeping we had to do, we go down and do business. We have quite a bit today, so Carla, you are up first.
Hey, thank you. Hello again. 2025.
Carla, let's talk about workers' comp today. We have to have that, of course, and it's always dependent upon how your experience has been over the last three-year period, so that's what we're talking about today.
Okay, well, as you're aware, with the workers' compensation, there's two things that really play into our premium, and that first is the amount of your payroll and also your claims experience for Park County. So we'll talk about both of those things as we move through this. My proposal is again with IPAP, who's had the county insurance workers' comp for a long time now. Not many players in that field for municipalities. We have based the 2025 premium on your audited payroll for 2023, and we have increased that 15%, which is a little heavier than what we've done in the past. And we did that because after I consulted with Susan, the audit in 2023 for your actual payroll generated an additional $13,219. Your payroll has gone up in '23, I think '22, '23 with increases.
Just so you know, folks, if you're curious, the estimated payroll for Park County for next year will be seven, right at $7 million.
Right. Now, we also, in addition to increasing the 2023 payroll by 15%, we also added the EMC workers for Vermillion County on an annual, for an annual payroll, because you didn't have that in 2023. So the 2023 audited payroll, which I don't think I put on that paper, was just about 5.5 million. So we're up about 1.5 million over our audit from '23. The second item is the claims experience mod factor, which is based on three years of claims. That did increase for next year to a 1.25 modification factor, which means you're paying 25% more than the standard rate because of your claims experience, which is up from 1.04 last, for 2024. We lost, 2020 claims fell off, which was like $53,500, but the 2023 claims that we added was just short of $136,000. So that played into increasing our experience modification factor. So when you go down here at the bottom, I've laid out what the 2023 audited premium was. Our estimate for '24 was $140,641, and we included six months of Vermillion County EMS payroll. So I've broken the premium out between the three funds, highway, general, and your Vermillion County EMS workers, since they're paid out of a separate line item in your budget or funding. And so the 2024 estimate was $140,641. The 2025 premium is $188,953. Now, when you look at these, this breakdown, I think what's going to jump out at you, as it did me last week, the Vermillion County EMS for next year is just short of $34,000. In 2024, it was $9,265, and we only had that for six months. But when I looked at this, it didn't make sense. And what, unfortunately, I gave IPAP your six-month payroll, but they prorated it, and they shouldn't have. They took it as an annual payroll and then prorated it. So what's going to happen, and I talked to Julie Landzone last week about the error. It's going to flush out at the audit, and there's going to be more premium due for 2024 for the Vermillion County EMS.
Just for our people to know, those additional funds will be reimbursed by Vermillion County. That won't be Park County's expense.
Right, but, but I wanted her to be aware, because I wasn't sure from a budget standpoint how that worked. So I think, oh, I did want to mention, we're doing our safety meetings bimonthly now, and I want to thank Julie Landzone for facilitating those meetings. And we need to still have all of our department has come to those meetings. We review the claims, things maybe we could do to alleviate claims. We also had planned a year ago to do the OSHA 10-hour training for the county highway workers, and we had a couple scheduling conflicts. And then with our turnover with personnel, we haven't got that scheduled yet. But hopefully, in 2025, we can get that arranged and get all the county highway employees and any other employees that OSHA 10-hour training, which IPAP will do at no cost. So that's on our radar to try and get that done, working around the highway schedule.
Okay. Well, just so everybody understands, we got the, one of the modifications we talked about is the experience. And so they take three years of experience, each year for three years of experience, and that then are the numbers used to figure what your experience has been. If your experience has been low, then the insurance is going to be low compared to if your experience had been high. Well, we were in pretty good shape with the three years that we had. We had a $50,000 year, $18,000 year, and a $40,000 year. The $50,000 year dropped off, not using more, and the new one coming on is $135,000 worth of claims. So that's, that's causing the insurance to boost up, in case people wonder why. Then the Vermillion County part, when Vermillion County ambulance service went out of business, and they were a third party to the county, as opposed to us, which we are, we own our own ambulance service. Park County took over that coverage for those folks, and Julie Landzone and that department did a wonderful job. And Nick, everybody working together, orders often by work together to get this to work. So no one ever lost protection, and any additional costs will also be reimbursed by Vermillion County. So the additional costs on that stuff will be coming back to the county. Won't be our cost to do that. But it's a great service. Those folks in Vermillion County had nothing, and they never lost an hour worth of coverage. So Julie and her crews did a wonderful job. Okay.
And I might mention, I did put in here what our claims are through November 17. We're at $94,000 for this year, so hopefully.
Better $135,000, not the $50,000.
Yes, but unfortunately.
We're going to lose 18 and get 24 or more.
We're going to lose the $18,000 year, so.
Next year's going to be higher.
Okay. So the final number is a $188,953?
Yes, sir.
You guys have any questions on that? It's not like we have a choice.
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion then to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal submitted by Carla for workers' compensation.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Thanks, Carla.
Thank you much.
All right, next up, we have a couple of ordinances to deal with here. One of them has to do with speed limit, the other has to do with EMS fees. So first is the speed limit on County Road 1150 North.
What numbers do we got, Susan?
14 and 15.
14 and 15.
Did we not already approve this?
No.
No, we talked about it last meeting, and then Nick drew up.
Right. We agreed we do it. We just had to have the ordinance written. So the ordinance says, "Beed ordained by the Park County Board of Commissioners, Park County, Indiana, that upon passage of this ordinance, 2024-14, and due publication of this notice as required, motor vehicle traffic on County Road 1150 North in Park County, Indiana, from Hindy Road to Narrows Road shall not exceed the speed of 30 miles an hour. Violators from this ordinance may be charged with a class C infraction with fines supposed up to $500. I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-14 establishing this speed limit." All in favor say aye. You have one you want us to sign? Thanks, ma'am. You got to work, huh? Thanks. And then next, we have an ordinance for emergency management services service fees. And this would be ordinance 2024-15, and ordinance to restate and revise rates, charges, and regulations for the Park County Emergency Medical Service.
Julie's emailed us earlier, so Nick has looked this over.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, I think the motion approved ordinance 2024-15 for the EMS.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
There's one who wants to sign, so I guess.
Is there someone here from proactive, from the county? Nope.
I don't think so. Nick had talked about, Nick Ebeer had talked about the increase that held off until 2025, because they wanted to enact it in '24.
Okay. So it's talking about the rates that we pay to use the clinic over in Monzuma. And it says the effective day is January 2025. Do you know what the monthly amount was last year?
I want to say it was $7,200.
Okay, $7,000 now, so we can.
Yeah, $600.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Okay, I was just making sure you were right, something down.
I was liking myself some numbers.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve the engagement contract with proactive MD for the clinic over in Monzuma.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay. All right, workforce development. We, they went over to Green Castle today. What this is, so folks can understand, is we are, we have seven employees in the county highway now who do not have CDL, and of course, we need CDL drivers, at least Class B, to operate our trucks. And we've got winter coming up, so we're going to need drivers. We had seven who were willing to take the class. The Indiana workforce will receive money from the state to pay for that. The state is paying for CDL classes for those who are qualified. I mean, and the qualification means someone's already employed, and that will get a different pay rate by moving to that truck driver, which we qualify for all of those things. So we have an agreement here before us that, of how that will work. Seven of our guys went to Green Castle today to Area 30 to do a tour of the facility and how that will work. I have not talked with them yet. They just got back today and went out working after that, so I will get with them, and we'll see if they're all seven intending to do that. But we will pay for that, and it's requirement of the state, county will pay for that upfront, and it's $2,000 per employee. We will pay that out of the Highway Department budget, some line item there that we have sufficient funds that we can move it in. And then after six months staying on the job, then the state will reimburse the county for that cost of the program. But we will also have the console with those employees who take the training that they, I haven't seen one for a date. We have a contract already that we've used before that requires three years of service following getting the CDL. And if that employee who received the CDL program and received the CDL leaves before the three-year period, then you have to repay prorated amount of that money to the county for doing so. If they stay in the three, three years of work, then it's, it's to our benefit to have CDL drivers working for us. So that is the, the training agreement that we have.
Susan's already signed, so I don't really need to.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't.
This wasn't, yeah, this was no, it was more than FYI.
Okay.
Because she had to come in and have it signed before they could go in today.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this really won't go as a contract, because only we can do the contract. So you might let her know that we would need another, another copy for the commissioners to sign.
I can do that.
Yeah, this is just a.
Yeah, we can reverse the state for that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, it'll be hopefully a good thing. All right, Matt Steckley.
Yeah, he's back there.
How are you, Matt?
Very good, sir. You?
Good.
Thanks, Carla.
Mind if I sit next to you?
No, go right ahead.
How are you, gentlemen?
Good, good.
Okay. So quick recap, we, when I was here last, I don't believe I was here in November, I think it was October, but ARPA funds got to be committed. We got two projects that are ongoing, and on my end, it was, let's go, at least ink on paper prior to January 1st. On my end, we got there. So we'll start with, let's start with the project highway roof replacement. So the, all the quotes are in here, and per page, it actually goes according to this analysis, so if you're looking. But basically, we had an original early quote for roughly $80,000 for the barrel slope at the highway garage. And you guys said, yeah, let's, let's go off for RFP. Good thing we did, did some samples, did some core samples. There's already two roofs on there. This would be adding a third, so good thing we, originally, $80,000 would have been throwing good money at something really bad, and now you're on a third membrane. So it, we changed, I changed the scope, multiple, quite a bit of correspondence to get to this point. It's really well done. It's ready to execute. But three quotes, guarantee roofing being the highest at $138, $288.49. Century Roofing came in at $104,580, and then FIDEA came in at $102,400. So really, really close. I went back and forth with Century and FIDEA being so close, and it's for a six-figure project, that small variance is really good. So I brought those two guys to the table separately and just really went through their quotes to make sure the scopes are same, they're looking at the same thing, everything. So, yeah, everything checked out, so obviously, my recommendation, any of these three players would be a job well done. They're all competent, a lot of due diligence and conversations with them on their qualifications. So naturally, my recommendation being apples to apples, and all three are competent. It's a simple decision to, if you're to award, to FIDEA for $102,400. This is for the entire tear-off of the barrel slope and then new insulation attached to the deck with a single membrane adhered, and then the small shindled section. And then your metal roof in the back remains as is, and then this is, there are some new gutters that look to be like literally braining.
They just put them up, yeah.
Yeah, so we were going to like mix and match what was new, remove and reinstall them, and in other sections, add new as well. So it's kind of just turkey, but you know, the, anyone, if any of you commissioners have been over there, I mean, the, the concrete block on the outside could use some waterproof and then tuck pointing for sure, but in terms of overhead, it's, it's solid. You're, you're going to get, the warranty on it alone is 20 years. You should expect 30, 35 years on this type of roofing system. We did not discuss start. I said, you know, they've got certain funds that they have to commit. I said, let, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. Let me get with you guys. But it didn't sound like colder winter as of now, I'll take it to the bank, but it didn't sound like that would hinder them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so I believe, and I'll be in contact with you guys. And install dates and durations will, onsite project kickoff with the staff over there, and how it's going to work, and just all in all, update and inform everyone of hours we're there, where they're in park, where the dumpster, just make sure everyone's up to date.
Just so everybody knows, the, all the counties and the state got money from the federal government, which came to the state and then to us. That was the American Rescue Plan funds. And we got about $3 million, if I recall, or about, there was four. And that was used for various things, there were various things you couldn't use it for. The state changed the rules many times, as a result of the feds changing the rules many times. Finally, got to where we were told that if we just took that as during the COVID years of revenue shortfall, then we wouldn't have to have to have that committed by the end of the year, because originally, you had to have it committed by the end of 2024, spent by 2026. So once we converted that money to revenue shortfall, we were told even by the head of the Indiana Association of County Commissioners that that would no longer be a requirement. Turned out, it was a requirement. We just got this information really last month. Susan and Bruce went over to a conference, and yeah, they've, they've gone to work. Not only do you have to have it obligated, but you have to have it contracted. So that's why we're working on this so much. If we did not have a contractor, what's so important here that, get this number that we get high, repairs that you would normally make in 2025 anyway. If we can move those to 2024 under contract, then we can use those ARPA funds. If we have that $3.2 million, and if there was any of that $3.2 million that was not committed contractually by the end of 2024, that money would have to go back to the federal government, back to the state, and then back to the federal government. So we have to make sure that we have every dime contracted someplace, otherwise, we lose it. So it's not like we're on a little hunting trip here to spend money. These are things that we're going to have to be done anyway, but we need to get them contracted by the end of the year so we can use those ARPA funds, which were gifts from the federal government. Call it gift, I guess. They take our tax dollars, they give it back to us, but that's where it comes from. So we want to make sure they're all used. So we're, we're going to have three or maybe a couple of things for sure, maybe three things that they, that we're going to have to commit those funds to, and that's, we're not on a spending spree. And when you're thinking that, it's just we have to commit these dollars before the end of the year. And this is one such deal. So now, we're talking about replacing the roof on the highway garage, which has not been replaced for a long time. There's a lot of leakage. The previous highway superintendent, he and his son have already done some work replacing some of the gathering, trying to get some of the water away from the block that was infiltrating into the building. So this replacement, this roof will be, and the small roof behind it with shingles will be a good thing. So we are at $102,400. That's the low bidder, and they are from Terre Haute. Versus the next lowest bidder was $104,000, and they were from Covington. So we just, you guys have a?
Nope, I don't have any questions.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion. We never in the contract with the member of the highway garage for a little bit.
I will second that.
You move a second, then we engage FIDEA for the roof replacement on the highway garage. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Bruce, I will take your copy and leave you with mine, but just while I got it. Initial, print your name, whatever, so I'll take that booklet. If you commissioners can go to, I think it's the fourth or fifth page, pretty, yeah, you're on at the map under, yeah, it's under HFI. So let's, let's discuss then. When I was here previously, I said I, I got to get before you guys.
Before you do this, let me tell them what this about.
Yes, sir.
We have found it in the jail, the jail, Jason, 25 years old now?
Yeah, 26.
26 years old now. The coppers disintegrating in the, in the jail, and all that, all those water lines, the valves, everything's going to have to be, be replaced. We checked to see if it had to be copper, couldn't we just use some less expensive material? No, it has to be copper. So Vermillion County is in the process, same thing right now. I did not know the copper disintegrator, but this copper has gone away, and it's just crumbling in your hand. So that's what we're looking at. We're looking at probably, well, we'll get numbers today, but that's what we're talking about, replacing all of that water infrastructure copper in the jail with, with new copper.
Okay, so I was here last time. I said stop everything I got to get before you guys as a board. The, the numbers were coming in absolutely insane. So left here with, hey, let's break it into phases. Up to you guys, let's, one, phase one has to be the largest, and then with the help of some ARPA funds, let's take advantage of that. So basically, on this diagram, you see in yellow, which is admin, and then the main corridor, or actually, the mains of the plumbing, that is your, your large copper. actually the mains of the plumbing, that is your large copper. So phase one is everything in red and then in yellow, including the main pump room, which is loaded with six and eight inch mains coming in that goes through the softener and valves. So extensive, the pump room alone is really an undertaking.
I hate to keep interrupting.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, no, 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 don't be, it's just I want folks to know what we're talking about. This is a big project, this is gonna be about a million dollar project to replace all of this. And again, to be able to use ARPA funds, we have to have some committed. So in order to have some committed, we don't have a million to spend, we won't have a million to spend this year, we need to break this down into some phases. We do have enough money, we're in the half million dollar range for this project. That will allow us to buy all the big copper, all the big valves, we're talking about all the major expenses we can buy, we can commit this year and use ARPA funds then to pay for those. Then in the ensuing years, it'd just be under normal jail maintenance to replace those things to go forward. So that's why this number's so big the first year, it will be less if we go forward beyond that.
Yeah, yeah, this is definitely the main lifting, heavy lifting. So also the advantage of phase one is that we are able to valve everything off where phase two and three were isolated. The entire facility could stay live except what's in purple and what's in green. So it's really just doing this right. Per the RFP that I created and went through with you guys, because copper's so volatile, and I don't want anyone marking copper up, we'll get it at cost indirect. So the county on top of this, the fittings and the valves, which are very pricey, the contractors carrying those, linear actual copper, what they used, I'll get that invoice as it goes, so we'll be paying. It was estimated just in copper alone, roughly a hundred grand, plus or minus, in linear pipe. So, and this is fully, full demo, full install, and then everything's gonna be pro-press, which is a little costlier, but you don't have the leaks, you don't have the hot work, we don't, no instance of a fire, something not sitting right, it's just the right way to do it. And once you get into that bigger pipe, pro-press really becomes pricey, but it's definitely the way to go. So this is turnkey, the only exclusions, I let you know when we walked it, I mean, everyone's really riled, they built this building, like, good luck ever getting to it again. So that's phase two and three. Phase two and three on the copper side is not heavy like phase one. Phase two and three is whoever's awarded, like, well, that's where it's at, how do we even get to it? So that's the issue, the costs in phase two and three are gonna be, we gotta somehow get to that. Phase one, the best way to do this, when we did the walkthrough, and I was gonna ask you guys as a board of commissioners, I can go out to bid with it? No, I actually agree with none, I can go out to bidder, did you guys have someone local? There's gonna be a lot of coordination, the sheriff and his team, there'll be a lot of meetings, both pre-starting and then once we start, but we're gonna try and limit the number of shut-offs. We're gonna talk to the sheriff on, hey, if we have to do a multi-hour, one, two, three-day shutdown, what's that look like bringing in food? There's, how efficient do we do this versus, no, we can't shut it down? That's gonna push everything and everyone back, but the sheriff really is gonna be driving how aggressive we can get in his team.
Typically, how full are you?
In my eyes?
Yeah.
Sixty-two.
Out of how many?
Hold about sixty-five, ninety bids.
Ninety bids, okay.
So we'll have a lot of meetings with the sheriff and just do backlogs for him and accommodate him and the staff. But what I was gonna say, that's not included in this, and it's the best way to do it because they ran this copper all over the place, and it goes through a concrete block, and then it goes up through this little concrete chase and out again, where's that even come out? We all decided that the best way to do this is to a carpenter, a whoever, regardless of the trade, we are looking, and I wanted to get your guys' approval, at least proceed and get some cost. We could do this on T and M, we could do this as a flat fee, but what we wanna do in phase one is bring someone in and absolutely remove all of the ceiling tiles and grid where there's copper. So, you know, I mean, we're not looking to remove all of the drop ceiling, the whole facility, but like, we've got mains that go this, and just for us to get in there and install this and mobilize, like, it's gonna look nasty, it's gonna look really, you know, broken up, but it's just gonna allow these guys to get in and get out, and then once they're done, come back and rebuild the grid and put new ceiling tiles. So I don't know, I feel really comfortable with something like that doing T and M. I wanna see you guys knowing we're local, this isn't like a specialized trade, I would think. There's a lot of people within the county that you guys could maybe refer or have me talk to them.
I'd rather do that, that works for you guys, I've always liked T and M. That way, nobody's having to stretch anything, they're getting paid for what they do.
That's it, you know, if you're there twenty hours, you're there twenty, if it's ten, it's ten. But either way, this, and it's a lot of work, but we've gotta have someone familiar with ceiling grids.
Part of what Matt's talking about is nowadays, if you build a jail typically, and you would know far better than I, but the ones I've seen, I know someone just built one, all the water, electric infrastructure you have down Corbers to do that, utility Corbers, where you have access to everything. This is stuff encased in concrete, up in the ceiling, running different places, you gotta go through bulkheads to get to it, and you can't rely on any of them, you don't know what kind of dish it is inside that bulkhead, so you just can't assume that you're gonna hook up a new system to that old system, it's probably okay. Can't do that either, so that's why it's such a mess.
Project, we'll nail down timeframes from start to finish. HFI has done work for you guys before, I have a wonderful, I strive for competence. If you're the lowest, great, but just competence is so important, and I'm really comfortable with these guys taking this on.
I think that's okay, then that's Bruce, Bruce okay with just doing timing materials?
Yeah.
On the ceiling tiles? Then I'll run, unless you guys have referrals, anyone in the county, keep that spend local, but if not, I'll start making some phone calls, but let me know. Any leaks pop up, these guys already said, we're gonna have guys there every day. We got a leak over there, we're pulling off, so downstream, any of these just kind of leaks that are popping up, so we'll get leaks taken care of real quick since we got a presence there. So basically that, I just wanted to show you the three phases. This is for phase one. We're technically awarding this in twenty-four. When this is done, you guys, depending on your budget, we can literally roll right into phase two if you look at twenty-five as a new year and wrap up phase three in twenty-six. But let's get through phase one, but I'm in front, you've got the two quotes. A lot of, I reached out to a lot of folks, I was very selective, but this was a lot of back and forth. These two came in, you couldn't go wrong with either of them. But the actual two that committed were gonna do it from my end, saying they can do it. Commercial Services came in at five fifty-eight-five, and then HFI came in at four thirty-one even.
Okay. Just so everybody knows also, we don't have to take the lowest bidder in these types of things. You'd have to have a reason not to take the lowest bidder and spend more dollars than you had to. But if you've had experience with one company over another company, either good or bad, and you are not obligated to take the lowest bidder, even though typically you would unless you had some reason not to, but you're okay with either of these companies.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
See, you reasonably go with the expensive one hundred and twenty thousand more than the other?
If they're both qualified and were, you're comfortable with both of them?
It sounded like.
We can put the roof on the jail for the difference.
It sounded like, it sounded like commercial was like, hey, bring us back for phase two and three, but this phase one in that pump room, we're getting a little jittery on the size of that job. So I think that was like, if we get it, we're gonna do really well, but we really, so yeah, you'll see Commercial Services again, they wanna take a look for phase two and three to get that opportunity.
Bruce, you okay with that?
Yeah.
You want to go over it?
I think so, yeah.
Is that a motion?
For that difference, yes, I'll make that motion, we go with that. HFI for the phase one copper replacement at the jail.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. If you wanna sign HFI. So I'll start on both these projects, they'll run simultaneously, two different buildings, but I'll get going right away on this.
So sheriff, in the meantime, can we build one of those outside tent jails like they had in Arizona, and you guys wear pink underwear and stuff?
Yeah.
There we go. And then you can keep my copy, I'll take yours. Commissioners, thank you as always.
Well, thanks, man.
And I'll give you guys updates, and on my end, consider these done, we'll get them as smooth and quick as possible. And please, to help me, something simple, like ceiling tiles, keep your ear to the ground.
Yeah, we will, yeah. Let us know when you're ready for people, we can put a word out and have, we can set up how you want those bids to come to you.
Simply, hey.
So this really come to you, not so much?
Yeah, no, I don't wanna get you guys, we just literally, hey, Dan, Bruce, or Jim Nice gave me your number, have them reach out to me direct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what a job. Okay, City Plus.
This one is to do with the codification and the stream, livestream for meetings. It's more of an FYI for you to review, and we can discuss further at the next meeting.
Okay.
Now, is this the company that Fountain County did?
Yeah.
That was the one you presented last time.
Right, and this one, we actually got a demo, it's very impressive.
Okay, what we're talking about is getting our minutes for all the meetings digitized, searchable, so if someone wants to find something that occurred twenty years ago, they can locate that, otherwise, the way it is now, if they can be found in events, it's the orders have to go through every set of minutes for every meeting for the last however many years that is to find it, not very cost effective to do, so we are heading into the new world with this type of stuff. I don't, yeah, there, nevermind, it's coming up. All right, the other ARPA commitment is with Joint, and this was an agreement that was laid out a long time ago when ARPA money first came along. Park County's been working for multiple years, getting high-speed internet county-wide, and we are gaining on that dramatically. We had four vendors at one time working in the county, the state was offering funds to these entities to go and locate the people that were not served, and then provide service to them. So we have paid the other entities that have gotten grants, and they have gotten addresses assigned to them. Joint is the last one, we always knew that would be in that million dollar range, it's actually at nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of ARPA money then would go to Joint due to their portion of the high-speed internet service in the county. So it's time to commit to that. And the only reason we haven't committed this, they had not given us a number up until Roy had contacted with them, I think, last week, and they finally came up with a number. We didn't know what portion of this money they were going to need, and they were going to need all of that accordingly.
Once we found out that we needed to actually be invoiced, that's when Roy contacted Joint, and Joint has sent the invoice. Now, as far as paying it, again, Jim's mentioned that this ARPA money does not have to be spent until twenty-six, but it has to be committed by the end of the year. So we've got the commitment, a lot of this will actually not be spent for a while because Joint has not put in the lines yet, as Roy calls it, they have to turn the green light on. And once they turn the green light on, that someone is eligible to hook up, that's what we pay them.
And if they don't ever turn that light on, they won't get paid.
Right, they won't get paid. But what we've done is we've committed that money for ARPA reasons, even though it may not be spent till next year or even in twenty-six, but that's what this is all about, and it needed to be done so we could not lose the ARPA money.
Is that a motion?
It is.
I'll say aye.
Let me sign anyway.
Yeah, just sign it.
While I think of this, before we move on to other things, I have some other things I want to bring up while I'm thinking about this, and the sheriff's here. I got a call, there were still some apparently discrepancies on some of the sheriff department employees as far as getting insurance paid or retirement things paid. Anybody say anything to you about that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. They wanted me to make sure that you were aware of that, it was going somewhere, okay?
And I emailed her.
Oh, good, okay.
It's all taken care of.
Super. I promise I haven't mentioned it to you, so I did, so now we can move on, yep. All right, we have material bids, twenty twenty-five, okay.
Nixon up here.
He's not, so.
So before you start opening, go ahead and take care of the next thing on the list, which is the, it's the second draw on the asphalt bidding, and we just need signatures.
So. We're talking about community crossings, grant money here that we've received from the state to do some asphalt jobs, so this is just a matter of sending out the notice for the bids. So I guess.
No, that's phase two of twenty twenty-four, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so we've got to pay that.
Yeah, we already agreed with that.
But the no-dollar amount here, right?
There's a breakdown that I gave all of you guys, it's.
Oh, it's on here somewhere else?
It's on the next grouping.
Okay, I got you, okay.
That's your copy.
Two hundred and four.
Okay. All right.
And that gives you the list on, should be that one.
Gotcha, okay. So the second part of the community crossings grant, we were awarded right at one and a half million, that's what we're allowed to get this year, one and a half million from the state. We had to match twenty-five, so actually, we were able to do two million dollars with the project, twenty-five percent match of us, seventy-five percent from the state. And so what is being done with this last two hundred and some thousand, whatever that number was, is County Road two hundred north, Marshall Road, County Road five hundred north, going west seven hundred and fifty feet, County Road five hundred north, Main Street to West Street, and then Hilltop Road from Highway forty-one, a quarter mile in toward Bloomingdale. So I guess we just need a motion then to pay?
A motion.
To accept the bids, I guess.
Yeah, accept twenty twenty-four, phase two.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, spin move second to approve asphalt payment requirements twenty twenty-four days two. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And there should be the little sign thing.
There is, I saw it here. It wasn't on this one?
No.
You don't need the numbers with us, so just use this one? Yeah, I don't need them. We spend a lot of money today. It's not ours yet, but we're getting there. And let's just get to hear the tour claim notice here before we move on.
And that, yeah, Nick's aware of it, it's just an FYI, it actually happened out at Raccoon Lake.
Okay, so we want to open these without Nick then, we just go ahead and open them just before that we open them?
Well, as I told Susan for a meeting, normally, the highway superintendent will look at these, I don't know who will assign to look at the bucky or whatever.
Yeah, it would be.
Janey, or I don't know who.
No, it'd be Buck, he's the superintendent.
Normally, they would report back to us next meeting, and we would approve the, because this will be all the like asphalt and rock and pipes, and it'll have to be split out.
We need open those.
Just open them today that we've received.
And make notes in minutes of who they were, so no one else comes online after that.
After that, and then we'll award the bids the next meeting.
Okay, that'll work?
I still think you probably should have Janey look at them, because she's probably more familiar with how the paperwork in there looks, and Buck, he probably doesn't have all the paperwork in.
And she'll be in tomorrow to pick these up, so I'll take those back with me.
You got a knife?
I do.
Okay.
You guys will be bored out there, but bear with me, nobody, Nick does this, so I'll do the best I can.
So just so you know, we have these, this timeframe, we get these bids for suppliers, vendors who wanna sell this asphalt, stone, metal parts, cutting edges, petroleum, fuel and oil on the roads, so we have to get those bids, get them by the state.
It's all taped.
Then we can take no longer take any bids, so we have to open them in a public meeting, and have them in minutes that this bidder sent this bid, and the bid was appropriate, not that we accepted, but that it was, it met all the requirements. And then the highway will look at those numbers, and they'll come back to us next meeting and make a recommendation of which ones they like to figure with. All we are doing is acknowledging that we received the bids and made note of the bidder, and then we will talk about those actual numbers next meeting.
Hey, we've got a stone and gravel bid, and it's from Perry Conrad.
It's a bond or a check, but then.
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't know all the things that.
I think they just either have to have a bond or a check.
We can make a motion to accept these bids in the moment, intend upon making approval and let Nick go through to make sure.
Yeah, you just do that.
All right, Heritage Petroleum for oil and grease products. Heritage Petroleum for oil and grease products.
Do you want me to help open and you can read?
You can do that if you want to. That's what I used to do for our previous attorney, I'd open and he would read it. You don't want to play with a knife, do you? We have a fuel bid from Alignite FS. Repair parts for the highway department, and it's from... Let's see who it's from. Auto Value here in Rockville. Oil and grease product bid, and it is from MDI, Morgan Distribution Incorporated. Okay, we've got liquid petroleum bid. And that's from Newton Oil Company.
And again, the purpose of this is just to acknowledge the minutes that this bid was open, you received. So, if any bid, if you want to look at the minutes and see who had turned in bids, there wouldn't be no new names showing up at some later date with another bid.
Oil and grease bid from Newton Oil as well. Tires and tubes, and this is from Pump Tire, Adelphia. Gravel and stone from Whitesville Mill Service. Okay, we've got liquid asphalt from Asphalt Materials. So, we've got liquid petroleum from Keystone Cooperative. Oil and grease from Keystone Cooperative. So, we've got gravel, sand and gravel, or just gravel, stone and gravel from S and G Excavator. Stone. And that's from Lincoln Park Stone. Gravel and stone from US Aggregates. Gravel and stone from Park County Aggregates. We have culvert pipe from Park County Aggregates. We have hot asphalt, along with liquid asphalt, so asphalt from Evergreen Road Works. Okay, we got, again, asphalt, liquid asphalt from Milestone. Gravel and stone. This is from Heidelberg Materials Midwest. Is that right, Dan? Have you heard that before?
Yes.
Heidelberg. Culverts and bridge materials from E3 Bridge.
You can see the end though, we're getting there.
Yep, she's down to two or three, I think. Culverts from St. Regis Culvert. We have culverts, and this is from Metal Culverts Incorporated. And also culverts again from Civil Con.
And that's it.
Is that it?
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, good job, guys.
Yeah, all you know, Mike, and let him over and pick it up.
All right. We have now a psych check request here for VS Engineering for special inspection snooper trucks, I want to use or...
It's the one that always comes out of Georgia. Anytime, I think we have two bridges in this county that divers have to go down. I go under the abutment to make sure there's no erosion under it.
Okay.
And I think every two years, two years ago, we probably paid for the same snorkel truck for the divers to do.
Okay. So, I make a motion, and then we approve the special inspection truck cost of VS Engineering of $9,661.50.
I'll second that.
All fair and say aye.
Good night.
Okay. I have a couple of things.
We also have Beth Martin.
Oh, okay. Beth, come on up.
All right.
She, we could have got you a long time ago, sorry, you weren't on the list.
No, that's all right.
I think there's a gentleman here or two that had called me about the NNS, might be pertaining to this.
We had three submitted, one of which was thrown out because there was no price on it, so the one that was basically unanimously chosen was from Halt and Clean, HWC.
Comp, this is a plan?
Yes, for the comp plan. The only issue we had was they came in at about 96.5, which is way over what we anticipated it would be. So, I had a special meeting with representatives from HWC, both project managers, and then two members of our selection committee that the planning commission put together, and we went through the scope details and changed it accordingly so that we would be closer, and we got it down to 70.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware, that's a little more than what we anticipated, but it's a lot less than 96.5, so.
And you're okay with the scope still?
I am okay with the scope still.
Any questions, guys?
I have looked them over.
Okay.
I see, or I seen it probably.
Right.
The fact is, you get the amount of that, that's actually less than the other ones that had a price.
Right, right, so it was, yes, and so...
The one didn't have a price on it, so.
And since we have someone in Cassie's office now, full-time to coordinate the public participation portions, and your involvement in public participation, we could take a lot of those meetings that are going to take place and were proposed in smaller incorporated communities and combine those, say, to one big one at the fairgrounds, or something like that.
And that's what we did before, yeah.
Right, okay.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
We'd like to have adoption in process by the fair, county fair.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, you'll see also, so you just brought to my attention, there is, you will see in some of the outlying towns, an offer to do additional portions for those specific ones for $9,500 per community. So, that's something that you, I would imagine, through City will coordinate with those communities and decide how you want to move on, move accordingly.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. What do you have?
The fellow just left, that he'd go out the door late. Okay, I guess nothing there.
Okay.
I'm just, I didn't see anybody.
I think he was listening to the bid openings, wanting to hear prices.
Oh, okay, okay. I have a couple of things I know I'm here to probably go through.
Well, one more quick comment. I have a, we had that meeting to lessen this, reduce the scope, so it was closer to our budget on Tuesday evening, and the contract's person at HWC is not going to be available over a holiday period of time. I sent an email this morning, and we'll have Nick a draft copy of the contract.
Great.
For him to go over, and we'll have one approved by Nick for your next being on the 16th.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a contract here, we already approved this, but we need to go to sign. This is for the door revanching at the courthouse, we didn't have a contract before, now we do have the contract. It's 800 per door, so the estimate amount would be between 6,400 and 7,200 for all eight doors. So, I make a motion, and we approve the contract with Brown's Revantage to redo the interior courthouse doors.
I'll second that.
And that is ARPA money too, aren't we? Did we decide that was going to be ARPA money as well?
Yes, that's why we need a contract for it. Yep. All fair and say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, he might give a copy of that to Don, so he can have for his records too, and then he can send a copy to Nick, he's got that covered. All right, let me see what else I have here. No, open up, there it is. I, oh, I posted on Facebook, just on my page, the highway department search, and that posted on our website.
I don't know if it was on our website or on Catherine's.
Not yet, did you give me, you passed out the job description, but you never gave me anything.
It's just, it's just, it's just thought up.
You didn't change?
No, description's still the same, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Nothing changed, same as we used last time.
Okay.
The CDLs is in the process. Nativity scene not oversup yet, but we already approved last meeting, the ARPA money put the nativity scene up. My proposal, I went and measured roads, and I gave those then to Bucky, and he just confirmed the numbers for our $2 million for 2025 January. When's that community crossings have to be done by in January?
It's normally the last day of January.
Okay. My proposal, and Bucky agreed that the need was there, but you asked me what the drive and the C would be to do Marshall Road, starting at 47, Marshall Road to Marshall, then south of Marshall, all the way to the Rockville city limit, as you go up the hill there by the park, and then Martin Street is that little bit of a jog that goes into the town. That's really in bad shape.
Goes up and ties into Anderson.
Yes, yes. So, that would be one, and then the other would be Strawberry Road, we talked about for years, we've been patching that for years, go from the prison, because it's been done out to the prison with last meeting crossings, go from there to Coloma Road, and then go from 10 o'clock road from Strawberry Road to 500, and then if we had sufficient funds left with community crossings, go ahead and take 10 o'clock road on down to tow path road, past Donna Gardner's house there.
Did that put us out to, out of Coloma to 36?
That's already been done, I think. Had Coloma Road been done already from 36 out?
I don't remember, do I?
I have to go check.
Yeah, do that.
I was thinking it was in terrible shape. I was thinking we'd done...
And we got time again.
From 36 over to Coloma, the one that heads north and south, but the one that angles in and comes out right down at Midway.
Like a big inch.
Yes.
Out of Coloma.
Or out of Midway, not big inch.
Out of Coloma.
From Midway to Coloma?
Yeah.
That's done.
Okay.
That's already been done.
That's why I wondered, I've been down there for a while.
Yes, that's, that's...
Yeah, that will complete that hole.
That will complete that section, yeah.
Okay.
If that's okay with you guys. So, I make the motion that we do those roads as proposed.
How many miles did we get, maybe you come up with a...
I added two, but I don't have the number from the ground view real quick. I gave all that to Bucky, and he called and asked if he needed to be here today, and I said no, because we weren't going to have anything really for him since we appointed him last time. All right, let me get this real quick here. And so, Strawberry to Coloma is 2.95 miles. 2.95. From 10 o'clock, from Strawberry to 500 is 4.2. I'll go ahead and add the 500 tow bath, we can do it if we have enough funds, if we don't, we don't have to do that. That would be .8. And then... Yeah, I got it here. 47 to Marshall is 2. Marshall to Rockville is 5.5. And then Martin Street is .2. 15.65 miles. Can you remember what that number was last time per mile? It was over 150, so...
172,000.
Okay, so if we take that 170, I mean, that $2 million... Let me get rid of this stuff here.
Should be about 11, 12 miles.
$2 million divided by 170,000. And that's right, 12 miles, yeah, 11.7, so almost 12 miles, so we may have a couple more. And if we do, we can take that .8 off between 55 and 10.
I don't have a problem with that, we'll just see how far it goes.
Okay.
As long as we make sure...
And we talked with the county here, with the council last year, when we were talking about doing Marshall Road, and when we had funds to do Marshall Road, I really hope we can go all the way from Rockville one piece instead of wedging things in as we have over the last many, many years, just because we didn't have funds to do it any other way. And they were aware that possibly it might be, they may need to find some funds to help finish that off, like we can do the whole thing through there, so. Okay, so I'll let, I'll let Cindy know that that's what road we're looking at, and she, she's our grant doer, so if you know what I'm talking about.
I have the estimate first.
Yeah, that's what he's asking for, from Warren now, so we should have that pretty quickly. All right, I'll let Bucky know that that's a go, and then we'll have those numbers.
Did we get a second on that? I've got your motion, Jim.
Did we get a second on, did we go on that yet?
I got Jim, but...
So, was there a second on that?
I'll second it, a few motions.
I did, I did. Okay, all fair and say aye?
Good night.
Okay. And of course, if we have to trim it off, we can trim it off and use that .8 miles first. And the other part we could trim off would be going from 10 o'clock road to Coloma Road on Strawberry Road, which is another mile, so there's almost two miles off of there.
Which we may apparently do now.
And that's okay. All right.
And most petroleum is dropped between now and then.
Yeah. The oil seems to be going down.
Yeah, that's what drives it, so.
In case you wonder, what we're talking about is to put down a two and a half inch overlay on an already existing blacktop road, on a 20-foot wide right-of-way, the cost of this... of just putting down that two-and-a-half-inch layer 20 feet wide is 100, last we did was about $170,000 a mile to do, to do that. So when we get, uh, a million dollars from the state, uh, it used to be we could get, what, 10 miles, 11, 11 miles, I thought we can get about, about like...
5.5, yeah, I think.
Yeah, scary. All right, um, that's all I got, I guess. Do you guys have anything else?
Nope.
Any public have anything you need? Your motion, New Jersey?
Make a motion.